We'll call the meeting to order at 7:37. Approve the minutes, the first order is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 11th, 2000. So 6:37.
6:37.
Good job, Jane.
So moved.
Thank you, we would have caught that, I hope.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is John Morrison, Connecticut Sign, he does not seem to be here, and I did not hear from him, so I'm not sure what that's all about. Let's table this now for the end of the meeting if he shows up, and if he doesn't, then we'll table it till next week.
Have to be rescheduled.
Give him the opportunity to present any more evidence that he might have.
Minutes.
I thought they just approved the minutes.
You already did it?
Yeah.
I think we did.
You were sidetracked.
It's a rainy night.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Economic Development Commission Budget Proposed. I think we've made you guys aware that EDC is getting up and running. Again, they never ceased to exist, but they ceased to actually operate for quite a long time. We've got a bunch of new members, there's a lot of enthusiasm, they met with the Merchants' Association last week at a Merchants' Association gathering, and they're working hard towards working and moving forward. When the EDC was created by ordinance, quite a long time ago, they were given a potential budget of up to 1 twentieth of 1% of the annual budget. This year, with this year's budget, that would come to about $9,240, $9,640, something along those lines. They've asked me to come to us and then to the Board of Finance to see if they could get any or all of that, because they wanted to start doing some things. One of the things that they want to do is get the website to a point where people can come online and see if there are, what's available in space in the town. I don't think they want to advertise specific properties, but they could certainly say, "There's a 10,000 square foot warehouse that's available, there's commercial spaces on Main Street," whatever's available, they want to be able to list that. There's a number of different things they want to do, and the website right now, they don't have an idea of what that would cost to update it, but that's one of the expenses that they'll have. I'm not sure quite yet what other communities are spending on their EDCs, but their websites are pretty nice. The other towns, the towns that are doing well, have an EDC that's active, that has a budget. Right now, they have zero in their budget, and that's been that way for quite a long time. So I'd like to consider whether we do it now or do it next month, I'd like to consider, and you guys are considering, ask any questions if you can.
Do we have an avenue for that money? Do we have that money?
Yes, we do, and we'll talk about that a little bit when we get into appropriations, but we've got, you know, we've got money. It's not, you know, it's 1 twentieth of 1%, so it's not a concern, it's 10 grand, but it's not...
But 10 grand's 10 grand, I just, you know, I don't want to take it from somewhere else if we need it, but if we have it and we can do it, I think it's a good idea.
That's likewise.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I know what you mean, and I think Board of Finance will have more of that exact same input, that, you know, let's get an idea of what it is. The EDC, I don't think is comfortable simply saying, "Well, let's..." everything they want to do, come and ask for money. They're entitled to a budget, they want to have a budget, whether it's all they're entitled to now or not, that's, I think, what's to determine.
And they have a full commission set up?
They do have a full commission, yeah. So that being said, I'm going to just, that's going to be one of the selectments things tonight, if you guys are both on board.
I'm good, I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on transfers and appropriations for the last year's budget. This is really how we end up the year, we're well ahead of the schedule that we've had for the last couple of years. I think the audit will be completed by the end of October, which is what is scheduled for. So what this memorandum is, is at the end of the year, we take all of the budget lines and see what went over, what went under, and see how we can reconcile all that to get to a bottom line. These pages all do that. If you go back to the third page, you'll see line items that I'm going to ask you and then the Board of Finance to approve, where we go in this, the first line you'll see letters 2, this is all transfers to whatever line that is, and then afterwards, you'll see, at the end of that line, you'll see where that's coming from. So for example, the $2,342 will go into the Selectment's budget from the Board of Finance budget. The assessor has $6,000, it's going to come from the Board of Finance budget again. And this goes right down the line to a point where we, on the second of those two pages, you get to the total number that we've transferred, and then on the third, and that should get us down to a total of zero, so this equals out all of the budget. One of the things that we're going to talk about with Board of Finance tonight is the fact that when we, if you remember, in preparation of the 1718 budget, we did not have a state budget yet. This has worked out to, what I believe is a real positive for us, because we budgeted and we came out to just about $60,000 surplus is where we're going to land for our budget. But what monies that we did not expect, and this is where, it's going to sound convoluted, but bear with me. When we prepared our budget, we prepared the budget. We didn't know what we were going to get from the state for education, we were guessing on that. We got $200,000 more than we guessed, so there's $200,000 surplus from state revenue. We had, if you look in here, you'll see the Board of Education, Deep River Elementary School. We're going to end up with $100,000, $113,000 back from them that they did not spend. So that, I think, is a result of teacher, losing teachers and then rehires at lesser cost. So there's $313,000, and we had collected taxes in arrears. So these are back taxes that we paid, back taxes, liens and interest, and late motor vehicle supplemental, that adds up to another $112,000. So we're ending up, in the end, with a little over $400,000 of money that we did not anticipate when we prepared the budget. It was money that we didn't collect from taxes, that we collected from the state, from the school. What that does is it allows us to put money into our budget that we were going to borrow for. Remember, we were going to borrow for the town trucks and for the school?
Yep.
With this extra cash, we don't need to do that. We have to buy the trucks, we budgeted to buy the trucks, the budget was approved by the trucks, but we don't need to go through the expense of the borrow. More importantly, we don't have to add or continue with the ongoing debt to pay that back. So we're going to be able to take the $461,000 that goes into our general fund and move it to the purchase of the trucks, to work on the school and things like that, without going through the borrow.
That's good news.
I somewhat like that idea. The only thing I'm concerned about is that we, here at the Board of Finance, that our unfunded, I mean, our excess money that we should have, we should have a higher amount, and we're shy of that. Should we deplete all of it and pay for the truck, or can we finance just a... I understand we're going to save money by doing it this way, but I'm thinking on the rainy day money, or, you know, the fund balance that we should have extra, or the same, we're supposed to have about 1.2 or 1.5 million or whatever, and we're short on, that would be my only concern.
Yep, that's a good thought, I think that...
You know, that's, the Board of Finance would have to decide. I said, "I know we're going to save money by not having to finance that, but I'm thinking on a backside."
No, I appreciate that, what I think, my suggestion to the Board of Finance and to us and to the town is that with this, we will be able to add to our, to that. It won't be 461,000, it'll probably be 100, maybe a little less.
Well, 100's better than nothing.
But that is really, I think that's, no, I think that's right where we want to be.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that we're putting something away to build that...
Well, that's important, because, remember, this was unexpected money from the state. We did not, didn't expect it, we actually expected to be behind from the state, so at the end of the year, when we ended up with that extra, it was unanticipated, but we're going into another year where our budget was prepared at the same time as the state. So we're very, we're close on those numbers, we know what those numbers are going to be. The only thing I can see from the state is taking that money back, once the governor and the House are in session, we don't know what they're going to do, we know that they're broke. So adding some of this to the reserve is great, but I think it's an opportunity where we can, in the long run, hopefully, if everything works out, not continue that repayment, that 144,000.
I see both sides of it, it's a toss-up, you know, we want to put money away and save it till we have it, but we also want to save money by not financing, and it's a tough call.
Yeah, I think, I think that we've been on a good path for the last few years of adding to that unallocated or reserve fund. I think that we're, you know, we have an opportunity now to actually pull back from some of our expenditures, one of which is the repayment of debt, redemption of debt, and if we can pull that back, I think it's something we have...
Almost 140,000, almost 150,000.
Yeah, it's quite a bit. So this is a, it's a bonus, it's a blessing from the state, from a good job by our tax collectors, and I don't know what the heck, aware that money, how that money happened with the school, but I think it came down from the change in teachers and the salaries, so.
However it happened, we'll take the money.
That's the news, we'll take it, that's right. I thought I heard somebody coming in, but it wasn't John. Do we have any comments or questions from the audience of citizens? Jane?
So you actually got that money?
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
It's in our bank right now.
It's in your hot look, Jane.
It's in the bank right now.
Okay, most of my questions, Bill has already answered, but I heard some talk that there were people that were upset about events that were happening at the town dock, and they couldn't, they were turned away from the area, but, so I wanted to know, you know, who gives the permission, and do they pay for this, and, you know, for the constables, does the town pay for constables?
Park and Recreation manages the land.
Right, that's what Bill told me.
The folks that have a wedding down there or something like that, they rent that from Park and Rec.
So they pay something?
Yes, they pay for the, they pay for the space.
Is that going to the general fund?
Yep. Yes, and they also pay for the constable. If there's more than 100 people at a public gathering, there has to be a constable there, so they pay for that. I had, it had been reported to me that someone was turned away from the dock, and I asked our constables, "That is not policy." No one says, all three, both are our constables and the state resident trooper, have said that categorically stated that they do not turn anyone away. So I can't respond to it other than asking them that. It is not policy at all. It's a public space.
The only thing, the only thing I was saying was, is that confined to residents from Deep River, or can anyone...
No, just like, no, it's, if you want to rent the space, just like up at Plattewood Park, if you're going to have a party, or just like over at the Historical Society, while I know that's not town, it's, you can rent it.
But, I mean, for the dock, you have to be a town resident in order to rent it, or can you be anybody?
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you pay the...
As long as you satisfy the Park and Rec's requirements.
And they keep the calendar for this?
Yeah.
Is there anywhere on the website where that would be posted, so people know?
I don't know. I'll ask.
I think it might be an nice idea. I mean, obviously, you may not have everything, but, you know, if somebody, it's nice to have something posted, you know.
Oh, that's Carol, I don't know what she keeps on the Park and Rec website.
Would just be a calendar item, wouldn't it?
I would guess, yeah, I don't know, I know it's on her calendar, because she's aware of what's going on, because she has to schedule the constables and all that kind of thing.
But she could put it on the town calendar.
I would guess, I don't know. I would guess, actually, the town calendar is maintained by the town clerk's office, so I imagine that she could.
Okay, I don't think that that's a bad idea.
Okay, I'll talk with her about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anything else?
Got a moment for a quick update?
Sure.
Okay. Deep River is now represented on the Estuary Board of Directors. As Angus knows, I was voted in yesterday, along with two other people, one from Westbrook and the other, I think, from Essence. The next meeting, it's annual, correction, monthly, falls in October. One major concern they have, which they're trying to focus on, is they re-engineer themselves to become more efficient, better service providers, is how do we get information out on what we're doing, what's offered, how to reach people, and that kind of thing, because they're, they're not as good as they had hoped they might be. So they're looking for ideas, suggestions, something that I'm thinking about. Gina has already given me a couple of ideas to consider, so, and they gave me a pile of these things here, welcome to one if you wish, and that's it.
Okay.
Good group down there, though.
They do some good work, they do, and quite a bit of Deep River citizens take advantage of that, so, thank you for stepping up and stepping into that.
At least I can do for you guys.
Anything else?
Yes.
Then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Stay in session?
Oh, yes, sorry about that, thank you for the reminder. We're going to stay in session for the Board of Finance, so we can recommend if we need to take any action on the appropriations.
Excellent.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, this is the regular meeting, the September regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda would be the approval of the regular meeting of July 2018. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes, or any corrections?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor, say aye. Moving along. Audience of citizens, seeing none, we will go to the next item. Tommy, that is you, the treasurer's report.
Let's see, not much has happened, we do have, with our Farmington account, we have over $5 million, $5,331. You see, we do get 1% interest, so we're getting over $5,300 a month in interest, which is kind of nice. If you look at where we were last year, and if you look at the bottom, where, you know, what our account balances are, total deposit balances, we have $6,636, and last year at this time, we had $5,976. Peoples United has actually acquired Farmington Bank, so I'm not sure, and that will be official next week, in October, so they've been great to work with, you know, they've been giving us some decent rates, so with this acquisition, I'm not sure exactly what will happen, but I hope things continue as they have, but you never know with these acquisitions, so we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Is there any way to do a comparison, if you call Peoples, to say, "Hey, this is a town, this is how much we invest?"
Yeah, well, I think I'm going to just, you know, status quo until, you know, if I see anything that's happening there, I mean, if there's a reduction in our rates and that type of thing, yes, I will, you know, definitely, you know, reach out to them and see what we could do, but, you know, as I said, Farmington's been a great, a great bank to work with and very accommodating, yeah, I'm going to miss, hopefully, things won't change too much, but, you know, I like the people that I'm working with there, and it's great, so, yeah, so that's pretty much it.
So can I repeat, last year, we have $5,300, what's around, $5,400?
Last year, we had $5,976, it was the bottom.
Tax revenues seem to be pretty good for us, I'm just struck that it's lower this year than it was last year. Must be on the expense side more than the...
Is it? It's higher, isn't it?
It's higher.
Yeah, right.
$6,650,000. It's $5,600.
Right.
Next year was $5,900.
About $650,000.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at $9,1517,590. Oh, and I, oh, and I'm looking at...
That's July.
Our total is $6,600 right now.
Oh, I was looking up here at $5,842.
Yeah, and last year, it was $5...
$6,636.
Sorry, that's July.
So that's total deposits, oh, that's total deposits, that's total deposits, which really is not accessible to us, correct?
Mm-hmm. Not everything. There you are.
Okay, okay. Next item we have is the recommendation of selectmen. And while I have an idea of what Angus tends to recommend, why don't you begin with music? My suggestion is we may want to sequence it by doing this work first, budget and some budget, because some of your recommendations, biggest part of your recommendations, will come into this budget, and it is affected by last... Cheers. That makes sense, if you and I are talking...
Whatever you like.
If you and I are talking in code, do you want to give us an introduction?
Whatever you like. First thing, I want to make sure that everybody here is aware that our treasurer has just been, is going to be recipient of the Beacon Award, which is volunteer, volunteer efforts to sort citizens around, and it's a great, great thing. Good job, Tom, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Can I say treasurer? That's very nice, yeah, okay, good. Good. Okay, yeah, there we go, Tom, anything? Okay, so we'll start with the memorandum, which is what, the Board of Selectmen, we spoke briefly about this, and we're sending to you, unless, we won't take any action unless you recommend that we do, but we can go through here, this, I think to get to this number, I will explain how, some of the positives from this. If you remember, when we struggled to put together the 1718 budget, we did not have a state budget to go with, so we took a guess at our education budget, the state promised us more than we budgeted, and actually came through with that, we were, towards the end of the year, we received in addition some of the funding that worked out to be about $200,000 more than we had budgeted for, so that's a big plus for us. The Deep River Elementary School, at the end of, you know, we're doing, getting ready for the audit and reconciling all of our numbers, the Deep River Elementary School is going, is $113,000 under what they budgeted for, so that's another 113 that will be in our coppers. That's based, I think, on teacher salaries, they, a couple teachers left, and the people they replaced them with cost less. And if you look at this, revenues in excess of budget, our property taxes in arrears, our interest and liens in our motor vehicle supplement adds another $112,000 that we did not anticipate in our budget. So we are combining that with our regular budget, which comes in about $60,000 surplus, we have got a $460,000 surplus at the end of the year. All of that, $400,000 of that was additional funds that we did not anticipate, there's no way to plan for that, that I can think of, and that's where we are. What I'm, what the Board of Selectmen is recommending at this point is, rather than go through the borrow that we had talked about doing for the purchase of highway trucks and school repair, this money, this $460,000 surplus will go into our general fund, where it goes, but rather than go through the expense of the borrow and the incur of debt, utilize a portion of this money for our highway line, our highway equipment line, as needed. You know, we're at, we just purchased a truck, there's $160,000. We've got another truck that we're going to be buying, it's going to be somewhere around $70,000. The refurbish of the other truck is somewhere in the vicinity between 20 and 40, so the 325 that we've got in the budget is a good number. I don't think we need to move all of the money, the 325 from this into that yet, I think we should use that as we, as we need it, come back for you, as we need to expend it, so we can keep that money in our reserve fund. But I'd like to speak with you more about how you feel about whether or not we should borrow. I think it's a positive thing not to have to. We have this money that we did not anticipate, we could, at some point, we could talk about zeroing down the, or zeroing out the redemption of debt line, that's $144,000, and that was left in there because we anticipated borrowing for all these purchases. My recommendation is that we move forward as I just described, and certainly would open it up for conversation.
Anyone have any direct questions for Angus? Well, I apologize, but let's dive, dig into Angus's memo a few moments. Does anybody have any questions for Angus? I mean, he sort of set the tone of what we want to do. Don't...
No questions at this point, no.
Okay.
Comments later, but no questions at this point.
This is always, upstairs, we have the annual meeting, does anyone have any questions? And everyone stands to make a speech, there's not a question mark at the end of any of those. That was awful. But what you see before you is things we have done every year, and they get a little confusing. Angus has actually written us three separate memos. The first memo is a listing of all the, the first block is expenditures that we have over expended. The second sort of block, they're using the term over expenditures with offsetting revenues, a subdivision of it. I'm not sure how you define offsetting, it's a good word, it just means that there is revenues that sort of partially make the numbers you're looking at different, okay? But if you follow?
More palatable.
More, more palatable, good. So if you add those two lines together, you will see that we have over expended in our budget by 208,608.8 cents. Now, we should pause and remember, we remember that, every month, we look at expenditures, and we sort of know this, okay? Now you drop down to the revenue side, which Angus hit the big star, which is on your right-hand side, but there are revenues that we said we were going to get when we put our budget together, and the state changed the names on it. They gave us money, but they sort of changed the names and members, so therefore, our budget looks like we did not get these monies. And if you add up, and one of those would be, if you remember, we had intended to take money from our capital, this is us, Board of Finance, and move it over to covers on the capital, we did not need to do that as well. So unless you want to go through any of these numbers, which we can, I should bring your attention to, there were revenues we had assumed we were going to get... there were revenues we had assumed we were going to get of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, you then go to the next big long line, which Angus has covered there. The state met their obligations to us, et cetera, and we received in excess of our budget, one million, two hundred seventy-six-three-five-fifty-two, okay? So that is good news. Um, every year what we, oh, let's turn to the second page, which are expenditures in our budget that we did not spend what we said we were going to budget. So, and that comes to a hundred and forty-three, seven-six-nine, forty-nine cents. And as Angus just pointed out to us, uh, the school has dollars unexpended of, what's that? Hundred, nineteen, hundred twenty thousand dollars, which serves a pause. Just pause there, and then we'll move on. Uh, but what we have done in the past, and we're going to do tonight, if you are comfortable, is we're going to recognize that we need to allocate through a transfer of funds from unexpended to those that are over expended. Um, and that is done for us. Each one of the incrementals is done on the next, the third of Angus's memo to us. Um, and everything balances out. I think that is all I want to say, unless you have questions, you want... We do this every year, it gets a bit tedious, but, um, it is required by our auditors that we balance this out. So when you see our final report, annual report, you will see budget, and then you will see appropriations are transferred between accounts in our, in our budget, so. Now, does anyone have any questions? That is what we're going to do. Uh, I would suggest that someone recommend that we accept the transfers and, uh, and appropriations as outlined in Angus's memos, what I think we should be doing, so.
Oh, no worries.
Um, but we've got a couple here that are over. Now, it's a one-time transfer, but it's over the, what is it, twenty thousand?
Well, you have hit, you have hit my conundrum. We live under rules imposed by the state of Connecticut. We, the Board of Finance, that says we are not allowed, well, let's go to the beginning. You go to your town and the town approves your budget. This is what we're going to spend our money on down. And while we rarely have that much pension, but there is pension, you should spend more in one place and another, and we bring it down, they vote on accept. We, the Board of Finance, have an obligation to fund those expenditures. And we do it through various sources, state and property tax, okay? We have the responsibility to fund. We then during the year are held under constraints that allow us to only move money into a line item twice without going to a public...
Once.
Here, once, no, it's twice.
No, I believe it's once.
Oh, there it is.
The second time we have to.
Second time you have to, the first time you can't.
We're saying, we're exactly the same thing. We can move again, we're just gonna get that first, excellent. And we cannot move more than ten thousand dollars without going to a public... Okay, in fact, talk to a meeting. And there's a great deal of consistency in that. You told the town this is what you're going to do. If you're going to start making changes, you gotta go back and tell the town, okay? Um, and it gets, uh, yes, okay? So to Laurie's point, and I have talked, I talk every year with the auditors, we've gone three years through, through various different auditors, but I talk with the auditors because it seems to me we are moving dollars into some line items greater than once and in excess of ten thousand, okay? Um, but the auditors tell me it is fine. This is what every town does and we've been doing it. So while I remain uncomfortable, I don't have a good answer for you. Um, our auditors are fine with it, so.
Fine with this, exactly.
Yes.
You contacted them about this memorandum and they said this is all okay.
Correct, yes. And every year prior, we are following the exact same procedure, so, um, so yes.
Right, this is true. This is not anything new.
This is not anything new.
We've always just gone to the town and said, hey, we over expended, but this is the revenue.
That's correct.
This is how much, and we do it every single year.
That is correct.
But it's not necessary according to...
It is not necessary.
Not according to precedent, we haven't, we have not done it.
Right, not according to precedent, right.
But the auditors confirmed that.
Yes. Kind of confirmed, I talk to them every year before we do this, they confirmed it. And they certainly went through last year's audit and raised no ruckus. They tell me that it is consistent with the practices of all other towns.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I, personally, I'm comfortable because I know every single month, this month included, hey, why is this line down to thirty-eight percent already? We do that every single month, so we know. And you're paying attention to the teeny details of what's actually being spent, where we're looking at the big picture of, hey, you're already down to thirty percent. It's a little bit too early. What are you doing?
Yeah, correct.
So it's not like we're not, we're being caught unaware, said, okay, yeah, park and rec is gonna be down because we know we did this change and this change during the year.
Correct. And I think, and that's a great comfort I take. None of these things are a surprise to us. We may not have talked about, you know, five hundred dollars here and five hundred, but we were aware. We knew that it was there. The alternative is every month when before, when Angus has a check that has to go out, that would is over budget, he should come to this board and this board should allocate money from unappropriate surplus to that line item. Now, that's intuitively how it should work, but think how burdensome that could be for everybody. And when you come with, and next month you go to a good town meeting, so this is what we have evolved to and the state, other towns have evolved to. And I think Laurie has captured my comfort that we certainly look at these numbers, we talk about them, nothing takes us by surprise, so.
None of them are surprises.
None of them are surprises. Uh, I, I'm going for the school surprises me.
Well, that was...
Uh, the school surprises me. And happily, the state surprised me. I may, may...
Well, that's a different surprise.
I spoke negatively often about the state during the year, but the school surprises me.
No, I'm talking about the transfers.
Yes, not major, not that.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the other part of transfers.
Yeah, this stuff is, I would, if I was on, and I'm going to be at a town meeting, if we happen to hold one, I'll say, yeah, I vote for in favor of, because I know what these expenditures are. This is something that we have to do, we've committed, we knew about it. Let's just do it and be done with it. If we can save the cost of however much in publishing it through a newspaper and waiting and town meeting and getting a clerk and paying a clerk for her time, it's an extra expense.
So Bud and I have had this conversation.
Yeah.
The auditors have, um, and based on their recommendation, I, I don't have any problem moving it forward as, as for this referendum.
So I, I, well, there's a couple of things on here now that we've done what we have to do. I'd like to draw your attention conversationally to a couple of things. Uh, first one we'll look at is revenues in excess of budget. Angus hit it, but if you look at, look at, um, look at the property tax. Uh, property tax itself, we over collected one thousand, four hundred dollars. I'm going to discuss, I'm going to characterize that, we were right on budget for what we estimated for property taxes, which is, which is good.
Scary.
All right, but property tax in arrears, forty-one-six, interest and liens on arrears, forty-three-four, motor vehicle supplemental, thirty-one, I mean, that's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is a lot of money that we did not budget for that is helping us develop a surplus to go into our next uncertainty. Uh, and if you look at another category, I don't know what assessment and assessment interest is, by the way, but it came from a lot of money, I guess I should understand what this is. But if you look at things that have gone on in the town, such as building permits, fire permits, in the wet planning and zoning, I mean, there's another, in, in advance, I guess I'll put in there, where people are selling their houses, I mean, that's like seven, not close to seventy thousand dollars of, of revenue that came into us that we didn't anticipate, so, um, things were good for us. And then if you continue down the line, you'll see that much of these things are just grants that the state changed names on as well, so. Uh, the next one I want to draw to your attention, and I'm tempted to make more of a connection than I think we can. If you look over on over expenditures with offsetting revenues, you see park and rec of forty-three, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars. They overspent their budget for thirty-three-four, thirty, okay? If you then look down at park and rec fees, they came in thirty-four thousand dollars, which I'm going to suggest to you, but you should be resistant to agreeing with me. The park and rec operates on break even, which is good. I think during the year we need to talk to the market. They perceive that certain things that they do allow them in the future to call upon some revenues.
In the past, that's been, for instance, the, uh...
Carnival.
Carnival, thank you.
I believe they think that the Run is fundraisers.
Yes, that's correct. Carnival and the Run are fundraisers for their, the last one was the place. And they consider them to be fundraisers.
And yet the monies are going into the town.
Money's always going to the general fund.
And it's always considered part of the town revenue at this point. I still think if they're gonna be doing something earmarked for a specific... But it's all their fundraising, I mean, that's what they do. It's all money for the town. So if they want a specific project, outline a project, bring it to the town, to the selectmen so that the selectmen could say, okay, in the next three years, we're going to get a brand-new, it's gonna cost thirty thousand, and it'll come out of the town budget.
Yeah. That's what they do.
Not specific, not specific.
That is what they've done.
Yeah, but usually we know in advance that they're gonna do that.
Right, right now, I'm not aware of that.
Or go to play station down there.
Yeah.
Now, they, they said, we, we're putting this money aside for this play station, da-da-da, and so on. And then they asked the money, we, we gave it to them. I, do they have anything that they are in the works right now that they're actually trying to build money for?
Their working money for now is bleachers and, uh, something else up at the field.
It'd be nice if they could come to us and give us...
Yeah, they, she did, she came to me, I didn't touch that.
She came to you, but...
She's talking, yeah, and I haven't, in this conversation, that's what they're, that's the next thing they want to put together is, is get bleachers up there so they can finish that field. And that cost is not gonna be extraordinary.
No, we don't have a problem with it. We just want to know that they're at, this is where, this is coming, this is coming up down the road.
Yeah.
These bleachers, we've put money in for it, and then these are rewards of money.
That's as much my fault as, as theirs, that I think Carol and I have had that conversation, that's...
And I'd like them to come in, because what I'm raising with you here is these numbers suggest they're not making money to set aside. And I'm, I think I'm wrong. I think I'm wrong. But this is the, that's why I read it. That's the way I'm reading it, but I think I'm wrong. For instance, they began to collect revenues in May and June for summer camp. That straddled our budget. Those revenues came in last year, but we saw the expenses this year. So I'm slightly concerned we've got some accounting timing issues. But they keep pretty good track of where their money's coming and going, so I'd like them to come in and talk about that and...
They historically make more than they spent.
Historically, and I think...
Not this year.
And that's what I want.
According to this, they did this year.
That's right, and I don't know if I trust my own math.
We have to tighten things up a little bit this year.
Yeah.
Or last year when we made the money.
They also, um, I want to point out that policy has changed as far as, um, selling. Some of their revenue is from Flatwood Park with, um, selling day passes. They decided not to do that and they didn't sell day passes this year. So there's no income there. That was a direct result of a lot of complaints from residents that out-of-towners were dominating and parking residents weren't able to use it. So they, they stopped selling day passes there. And the same thing down at, at the landing. They, they increased the fees to use the landing for out-of-towners and enforced them, which a lot of, which led a lot of out-of-towners to drive to Old Sable where there was no fee. So their income from parks is reduced. So, you know, when you see revenues, revenues from them, that, that's going to be reduced. I don't think it's an extraordinary amount of money, but it is revenue, you know, probably a couple thousand dollars every year, so.
So I just raise, I think, I'd like to invite them in. I don't think they would agree that they're a part of the game, but...
That's fine.
Let's invite them in, get them, have them talk about what they think they're putting dollars aside, they'll make sure we're aware of it, so. That's all I wanted to do.
Laurie, do you want to send them an invitation, or I'll just tell, I'll tell Carol tomorrow?
Yeah, okay.
All righty, so, um, I'm going to say we're done with Angus's memo. We have moved and transferred funds as necessary, as outlined in the memo. We can go through anymore. I'd allow, now like to go to...
We have to vote on that, though.
We need to vote, okay.
We did not vote on that.
I, I already moved.
You made the motion.
I've already moved.
It is my personal opinion that you have such influence that, that it sways the board, so. Do I have a first to accept Angus's recommendation? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I, before we discuss Angus's recommendation on the budget, I'd sort of like to go through this year's budget, which is where we will see, where we have to, what we will need to adjust to recognize that, uh... Those dollars. All right, now, and what I sort of suggest we do it. Uh, we are in September, uh, which would suggest that we've spent approximately, we should have, if world works on a straight-line basis, we should have spent about twenty-five percent of every budget. Uh, and some, which leaving a seventy-five percent for the rest of the year. Um, and that expenses right here. And I think if you use that rule of thumb, it is a good one. Laurie has spent some time applying, well, no, that was her criteria, not that it's a good one. Um, if you stop, let me just start at the top, you'll see that everything fits that. What's the, Laurie, call out those that you were interested in.
Page one, the dog licensing, is this a one-time payment to the state?
Yeah, let me answer. I, I'm sorry, I was doing Board of Selectmen stuff for a second, um, and so I didn't know where we were. Um, yeah, the dog license is a one-time fee.
Okay.
Um, your second one, auditorium at thirty-eight percent.
Yes.
Um, that, is that thirty-eight percent? Because if you remember, when we, we established that line this year, we had nothing to go by. This is really kind of a, we put this line together to gauge where they're at. So we put a thousand dollars in there. She has spent, she's keeping very good track of her hours that she spends up there. And also, um, she just gave me a revenue that's not in this budget, there's, there's three thousand dollars. That wouldn't reflect to your question, but there's an additional three thousand dollars that she's made this year that hasn't gotten into, um, the numbers that Kathy sent out to us. So that, as you, as we watch that over the year, it's going to probably go well beyond what we budgeted for it because we didn't, we took a guess. It was really just a number to, to be there. The dog run lease at eight percent, that is a one-time SS dog pound fee. Um, it's a, there's eight percent left because we always budget a little bit more for any incidental fees that might come up during the course of the year. Uh, building official salary is already down to sixty-nine percent. Yes, it is, but if you look at, if you look at the, uh, revenues this year and, and our permit fees this year, he's been extremely, it's been an extremely busy summer, so he's put in...
He can revenue from the excess, there's a lot of building permits.
Now, those are not intended to offset, it's just an indication of how, how much work has been happened.
But it actually does.
Yeah. Uh, police vehicle maintenance, that, um, is, uh, that number is, is a little skewed because Kathy made a mistake and put one of the fire department vehicles in the repair line. So there's about a thousand dollars that'll come out of that, and I think that'll push that right back up again. Yeah, that's about twenty percent of, of their budget, so. Special funded line at forty-seven percent, that's another line similar to the auditorium. We set a place that we put thirty thousand dollars in there, but it's always a hundred and sixty thousand dollars thing, so.
Yeah, I know, that one is, as it's expended out, whatever project comes through.
The transfer station salary line, again, that's, uh, a, a charge was put to that that shouldn't have been. When Paul retired, we, we put, she paid all of his, um, accrued time to it, to that line, where we actually, if you remember, we, we established a contingency for that particular thing. So that'll be reflected differently the next report you get. Um, the lavatory and the muster, that was, um, a result of the fact that Kathy and I were talking and we decided that all of the muster fees should go into the same line. In the past, when we rent, uh, we rent additional dumpsters for garbage, for garbage, it's only a two hundred and fifty-dollar charge, but we've been just slipping it into the regular waste fees. I, I think in an effort to get a better fund, a better idea of what the real, the muster really costs.
So let's rename this line to muster associated fees.
Yep, exactly. Sanitary associated fees for the muster, because garbage and sanitary is all the same thing, so. That's all that is. Uh, part-time and, uh, summer and lifeguard salaries. If you think about it, that's, that's where they should be because they're done now.
Yeah.
Um, and they're not gonna start up again until the middle of June, thirty-three percent's about where they should be.
Since it's only a month, so that it's extended.
Yeah, exactly. It's not even, it's not even a month, it's gonna be two weeks worth of time, yeah. So that's right where they should be. Thanks for the question, so those are always, always good to keep us just what we were talking about earlier.
Now, there's a couple that I noticed as I look at it tonight, uh, if you notice in selectmen's salary, there's still nothing on the union negotiation. Angus is still working on that one, so.
They, they were on that.
Oh, they didn't? Oh, they didn't?
Yeah, that... It's been sent to their attorney for final review, but I believe that it's passed.
Oh, excellent, okay. Excellent, good. Are you free to share, or do you wish to have that passed?
As far as I know, it's approved. I believe they voted, and that's where they're at. Apparently, the final step is to send it off to their attorney, make sure that everything is good. As soon as we get that back, they'll sign it, I'll sign it, and we'll be done.
Okay. Are you prepared to comment on whether we will see increased in cost in our budget?
No, we will not. As we see it right now, this year was... If this is passed, which I think it is, this is the first year of the beginning of employee contributions towards healthcare, in an effort to try to make that a smooth transition. This year was zero percent contribution from the employees, but in order to compensate for that, there was also a zero percent increase in salary. So the salary will stay flat, but they're also, they will not be contributing to their healthcare. Next year, salary will increase, but will go up with the increase in contribution. I tried to do the math so that no one will go backwards in their salary, in their paycheck, but, you know, it's... It was time that they had, they had to start contributing. That was really the big, the big thing. The other thing was accumulated sick time, and we put more of a restriction on that.
So, as we move through the year, we can assume that that fifteen thousand contingency we put there, certainly there will not be a draw on any magnitude.
I don't think so.
The next one, I wish to point out to you that here we are in September, our audit is beginning. We have, we, Board of Finance, has made the first payment on our audit expense of twelve-thousand-five-hundred What I was a little surprised about under special services, remember, we had quite a bit of conversation about tax relief for elderly reserve with fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty. It has been untouched. I would have thought, and I just noticed it tonight, and I'll talk with Robert and Katie tomorrow, but I would have thought some of that would've been drawn on for the first tax spend.
We need to look at the schedule on that, I don't know how that works.
Certainly.
But that's a good idea, if you're coming in tomorrow, we can have the conversation together.
Maybe people don't recognize, I don't know.
Robert will not be in tomorrow, so...
We wait until September twenty-fifth, I can wait a couple more days, I think.
Well, I don't... Most people won't recognize, I mean, they, previous years they've recognized, and so why?
Yeah, sure, and that was what they were going to recognize, I can't figure out why. Maybe it's just been charged someplace else, but we'll figure it out. Employee benefits, and Angus covered it, we have a line item with that which isn't touched in this budget. That's why it's incorrectly assigned to the, over there. And I just wanted to go on record saying that I thought Angus's idea of tracking muster costs is going to be what we will do with this. I don't know, it does seem like something we should have the ability to say to ourselves, the muster costs the town a deep river of the following dollars. And to that, in the police line, there is a muster that seems surprisingly low, the overtime. Is that... Do you think those numbers are in there yet? That stuff comes late.
No, in fact, I'm not sure why that eleven hundred dollars is in there.
Eleven hundred dollars, yeah. Same way budget thirteen, that seems awfully low, but...
No, thirteen is what we spent for police, for the muster.
And that's what we budgeted.
Yeah.
Current expenses, a thousand-one-hundred-fourteen dollars, so there's quite a bit unexpended, which does not seem to make good sense, so...
Might not have gotten the bill yet, but that doesn't make sense either, so I'll ask Kathy later.
All right. All right, everyone. Now, let us think about Angus's recommendation. And anyone can jump in to comment on, in when we built the budget, we assumed that we would borrow five-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars. Approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five of it would go to purchase two trucks, that's the way I talk. The other two-hundred would go to put a new roof on the school. Angus should take over, we're either delaying or have another plan for the school, so they take the two-hundred off, and the trucks are coming in lower than necessary. Regardless, we have a budget that assumes we're getting two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in from the debt, and pay, and we have an obligation to pay the back over five-hundred-and... Make back one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. What Angus is suggesting, and I think I've had private conversation with each one, almost individually, you are very supportive of that, this is where it's being. I don't think we need it at the moment, so what should we do? I think we need to take... We, the Board of Finance, need to say that the two-hundred, the five-hundred-twenty-five in the budget should be zero. We don't want five-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars in our budget, it's not gonna be there. And we should say the repayment should be zero. And then we should appropriate money from surplus to cover the cost of the trucks.
So this money that we have will go into surplus?
Yes.
And then the money will go from surplus to pay for the trucks? I totally have always advocated not borrowing.
You have been an advocate, yes.
Okay. What I don't wanna be is in a position where we say, we're not gonna borrow any money, we're gonna use this money for the trucks and so on, and then raise taxes next year because we don't have any money. And I know it's too early to really delve into that at this point, but that's part of my concern.
That is absolutely... Your goal, what you just said, is exactly my goal. I do not wanna raise taxes next year. I've stated it before already, this is my, all of my efforts are gonna go into a zero if we can.
Right.
Zero increase. What this opportunity gives us, though, is an opportunity to purchase these trucks without taking on that debt.
Well, we save a hundred and...
We save a hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And if we are successful with the grant for the fire truck, that hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars stays out until we do another borrow. To me, that's a win. If we are not successful, then we have to borrow for that truck, and a hundred-and-forty-four stays where it is, still flat, not an increase. So, to me, using this money that is bonus money, if you will, we certainly didn't expect it, to negate a need to incur more debt is the direction to go. Putting it in our coffers for next year...
And incur debt doesn't make sense. I agree with that.
Yep. I don't know, you know, we've been working for the last two years, and three years really, almost, budget-wise, towards adding money incrementally to that reserve to build it up. I... And trying, and not raising taxes to do so.
Right.
You know, that's not the goal of the taxes, is to build that up. We're using surplus, which has been there. I, I'm reluctant to put this in that account, and to hold this in the reserve, and then go, and go and borrow. I just think it's, I think we have a window that we're not gonna have, again, you know, we had a budget, when we, we had this budget that we, from the state, and it's an opport... I think it's an opportunity that we're not going to get, and we ought to take it. It's the best way that I can explain it. I, again, have very little confidence that the state is gonna follow through with what they said they were gonna give us. But even if they do, we budgeted to those numbers, so this additional money was, really came from, from heaven, manna from heaven. We did not expect it.
I...
And I don't expect it again.
I'd care if you called Harford Heaven, but...
No, you wouldn't be going. I didn't. I don't know where that came from, but I guess it was our conversations earlier, but I understand what you're saying, I just don't, I think we should... My feeling is, was we should take the opportunity to not incur the debt.
I think we agree with our philosophy. It's just I wanna make that point, that we can't lose sight of the fact that we don't want to end up sitting next year on budget plan and say, well, we gotta raise taxes a half mil or three-quarters a mil.
We just had a half mil.
Yeah.
We just had a half mil.
No, if you look at the last three years, we've had more than a mil.
Oh, no, no. The year before was a huge increase.
Yep, so I, I absolutely agree. I think with this, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna spend all of that four-hundred and change, so we will be able to add to our, to our surplus. I think we're gonna land at somewhere shy of three-hundred thousand dollars for highway equipment. The school roof is a different situation, that in order to do the whole roof, we need to start planning for a, to go to bid sometime between December and March, so that they could be ready to start when schools start. We did not do that this year. By the time everything was ready, we weren't ready to go to bid and have the work start and be done before schools started. So we're not gonna spend that two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars on that. What we do have to do is patch a couple holes, so I'm...
Well, spend the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand next year, when after this come in, we do those two.
Right. Well, my thinking is actually to change back to, only a result of the scheduling and the fact that we do have some work we need to do, is to come back around to what the original plan that Dick set in place is, we will spend a certain amount every year on the roof, and we'll end up with that. That decision doesn't have to be made right away.
No.
But I want, if we're gonna go with the full expenditure, I wanna start that in December. So we've got a few months to hash that out and to talk about it, and to talk to the roof person, see what the story is, talk to architects. But that's, two-hundred-and-twenty is not gonna be expended this year. And I think that we can, if we go back to the original plan, which was, you know, a little bit every year, we will again be at a zero incurred of debt and increase, because we've got that in our budget already.
I like zero.
You and me both.
I like zero increases.
You and me both. That is the goal.
And that's still in that one-forty-four, using the one-forty-four that's in the budget this year for the trucks, but leaving it in our budget planning that we do in March, April for next year, so that we're holding that in the budget for continued use towards another fire truck, whatever.
We will, we will know by the time we're doing our budget whether or not we're successful in this grant.
For the grant.
And if we are successful, then that one-forty-four does not need to stay there. We will not borrow for a truck, we'll have the truck.
Hopefully, we'll hold that, and not just a portion of it.
Yeah.
And we'll know by then.
We'll know by, by the time we start the budget, we'll know that. That's the plan, that's what all of our efforts are going towards, and if we can get rid of that hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, that's a win.
I'm gonna play with your words, leave me at there. I think we're in agreement.
Yes, we talked about that.
We asked the citizens of Deep River, we're gonna borrow five-hundred, we asked the citizens to give us one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars to pay that first obligation back. If we don't borrow, what we ask the citizens to give us in taxes, I suggest we think about making a zero in our budget, which would drop to surplus, which we can use, which means we only need, how do I wanna say this? We only need of the four-hundred-and-sixty-one, we need the difference between the force, what we're asking, what you think the trucks are gonna pay for, and the one-forty-four, which is, what, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, some net of the tip. Hopefully, that came out correctly. Now, here's a question, and I am very confused. We have a responsibility as Board of Finance to fund the budget, expenditures, which we have approval to do the trucks. Three, which we have three-fifty, it's going to come in less than that, I just couldn't remember the word they're celebrating. Do we just accept that we will over expend our revenue, will we overspend the budget, and we won't have offsetting revenues? Or do we put revenues, does this board somehow bring revenues from surplus into this year's budget, so it is balanced? Or do we just over expend the budget? We will not have the revenues, we anticipate it to fund the trucks. We are going to take money out of the surplus to fund the trucks.
If you drop my recommendations for balance...
My recommendation, I'm just more comfortable moving money into the budget somewhere. Transfer from unappropriate surplus into the budget, which I believe is at our discretion. I think I got you confused on notes. I do not believe we need the town authority to do it. We need the town authority to spend, we don't need the town authority to have it funded.
That's also been substantiated by the auditors.
So if we drop the one-forty-four, and we appropriate one-sixty-ish from this, that should cover.
Sure. Adding those two together, the one-forty-four interrupts the surplus, we take the, whatever Angus eventually spends on these trucks, we will know soon, we don't truly know tonight, we will take those dollars out of surplus and move it up, and we'll call it transfer. I don't know what we'll call.
So it still roughly leaves three-hundred...
Yeah, my math is, yeah, at least about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars added to our eight-sixty from last year. I mean, we're a billion, about a million-two, I think, for surplus, which is about seven-and-a-half percent, so...
Not too bad.
Which is probably better than we've been in quite a few years.
Ever, yeah.
So it goes to Angus's point, we're moving in the right direction, we don't incur any additional debt. The dollars the town gave us to pay back the debt, we'll put towards the trucks.
So you're not, you're not proposing we appropriate the full four-sixty-one, just the, just the delta that we need?
Just the...
Yeah.
Just not expend that line?
Well...
Well, partially. We would appropriate, no, we'd appropriate some.
Let me see where I get, it's very confusing, I get myself confused, so in case you get confused, I gotta write and say it again. Our budget currently says you're gonna get five-hundred-and-twenty-five million of borrowings. We're not. I suggest that we make that zero.
Yeah.
Which makes our revenue too short. I, our budget assumes we're gonna pay one-forty-four, five for debt, which we're not. I suggest we take that out of that line.
Right.
Let's come back to how we do that, I don't know, okay? So we're unbalanced, our budget, the difference we need to move up to the revenue lines.
Right, which is the one-sixty from here.
We have an obligation to present to the town a balanced budget, and I believe we have an obligation to ourselves to attempt to maintain a balanced budget.
Yeah.
Very difficult to change, so I don't think we have the number yet, so I guess it's just, is everyone not, I'm not asking for, I don't think Angus asked for it, we're not expecting, let's not go borrow, it's not a resolution we'll make, but it's what we're planning on doing as we move forward.
Well, we have the lines, highway, trucks, DRS, under general...
That's fine, we have the expenditures.
We have the expenditure line.
Approved.
And all expenditures are paid through the revenue lines, or the unappropriated jungle fund. So it goes into the jungle fund, and it's paid out of that three-twenty-five line right there, and at the end of the year, the highway debt is not expended. The one-forty-four is not expended, so it's a line that stays at one-forty-five.
Unless you zero that out, you won't have a balanced budget.
We will transfer, at the end of the year, we'll transfer that one-forty-four to the highway truck line, just like we've transferred it that year.
Okay.
Over expenditures, under expenditures.
You don't want to have a balanced budget?
We balance the budget, just like we did with all of these. So we're gonna be transferring a hundred-and-forty-four...
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
You do not wish to have a balanced budget during the year? And that's where I get confused. As long as all of us agree that our expenditures will exceed our revenues, that's fine. Do you wish to have a balanced budget as we move through the year? Do we have an obligation, we, the Board of Finance, to move money into some line in the revenue line, so that we leave here at the next meeting with a balanced budget?
Well, we currently still have two-hundred-and-ninety-nine in that line.
In what line?
In the highway trucks, DRS roof line.
But you, that's an expenditure.
As an expenditure.
We have approval to buy the trucks, we just don't have a source, a direct source of funding to pay for it.
No, I'm in the wrong spot here.
If you take that, if you're not going to budget, your revenue will not, you will not have revenues in your budget to balance your expenditures. You have to replace that borrowing with surplus funds.
Right, and that's what, that's what confused me, it still does, the revenue from the borrow.
The...
It's still revenue. I see it as still revenue. We've got this additional money. But it comes from a different source and it doesn't quite add up to the same amount.
And that's my question to you. Let's, we can truly know every month that we've agreed to not have adequate revenues to fund those truck expenditures. We know it's coming out of surplus. We know we've over expended our budget, so... Or do you wish to move money in to make the budget appear to be budgeted, balanced? That's the question I have for it. It is, I think it is words that we're talking about.
This is your guys' decision, but my preference is to have a balanced budget through the year.
I do, I do.
Me too.
It's a little more convoluted, but it doesn't require a time meeting. It's something we do here.
That's right. All revenue, we do ourselves.
We don't have to do it now.
I don't think we can do it now until you get a final number.
Right, right.
So, we just start moving money into revenues to do it.
So, then you would zero the one forty-four.
That's my thought. Zero the one forty-four, which may need a town meeting to change.
And then move the difference.
Yes. That's, we're wanting to...
That makes sense to me.
It's what we think we're going to do now.
Yeah.
That's why I think it's nice to reflect that.
You know, sitting around a table talking about it, it just makes, to me, not to go through a year with it knowing it's not balanced, it doesn't make any sense.
Yes. Is that what we just did? We look at expenditures every month. We know we've over expended some, under expended, and we put it off to the end of the year.
I know.
I'm uncomfortable with where I am, but...
The one forty-four reflects a borrowing that's not going to occur.
That's right.
So, it's a change. It's not really, yeah, it's not really accurate to leave it that way.
That was my thought.
I agree.
The only thing about, and it doesn't, it's nothing. But with that at zero, we have to keep that in mind next year. If this grant does not come through, we will be borrowing for a fire truck.
Correct.
And that will go right back, that line will still be there and we'll go right back.
Refund that line.
Yep.
Yes. I don't think that's a problem. We would know why we zeroed it out.
That's right. No, we all, it's all be the same people.
Yes, we will, so, yeah. Okay, so it's, I think it's centered, we will deal with this in our next meeting. Maybe I'm commenting on Bill's point. I don't wanna start the sentence off with a gleeful head lines that I like debt, but I think the appropriate use of debt is important. We were, we're going to buy three trucks, which will have, two trucks, I just added another. Two. Two trucks, two, two, sorry. Start trucking on it. We're buying two trucks.
Three new.
You want to. All of which are assets that have very long lives. They will provide benefits to lots of generations. People who are not yet in Deep River will get the benefit of those trucks and those roofs, okay? By borrowing and spreading the cost out over some period of time, the life of the trucks, those who will benefit in the future pay for it as opposed to asking citizens now to pay for it. So, that is just a brief comment why I think debt is useful for large assets like that. We're not asking current people to pay for every, the whole truck or the whole roof, so... But to Bill's, I think to Bill's point, if we find, we move through the year and we are short of cash, we can always bring that debt back by simply telling the town that was the, our intention, did not give us the authority to do it. We still had to go to a town meeting. So, I apologize, just a little thought. I like debt and I'm not always convinced we use it correctly or as efficiently as we should. Just thoughts. All right? I think we have done, we're in the right direction of your recommendations. Anything else you wanna chat about?
Yes, I'm sorry, the Economic Development Commission has been reestablished. We talked about this a couple of months ago. When the Economic Development Commission was established by ordinance back in the sixties, I think, they were allotted up to one twentieth of one percent of our general budget as a budget for the Economic Development Commission. That works out to, in the neighborhood of nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars. I have not done the exact math yet, but it's, that's the neighborhood. The Board of, the Economic Development Commission has gotten together a couple of times subsequent to our last meeting and has got thoughts on needing money in order to reestablish themselves and to bring themselves up to where they can be, I don't wanna... Competitive might not be the right word, but certainly competitive with other communities, other economic development commissions to help with their, help them pursue their charge, which is to help enhance the quality of life in this town. Right now, the last time they met, it was talk about updating their website. They really don't have a website right now. It's just a link, just like all the other commissions. If you look at neighboring communities or communities across the state and actually across the country, economic development commissions are one of the gateways to the town when it comes to businesses or people coming into the community. A website would be with the first, one of the first places they would probably look. I think it would be an appropriate expenditure for them. Right now, they have zero. I don't, I don't have a final number to give you, but I would like you to think hard about finding some money and putting it in that line and creating a line for the Economic Development Commission. The Board of Selectmen spoke about it earlier and are all in support. I think Bill would nod his head and bang the table to say we are in support of getting this group active and working. There was a meeting, a joint, not a joint meeting, but a few members of the Economic Development Commission met with the Merchants Association last week. And I'm hoping that we can continue that relationship and really work towards helping get our tax base up and bring people into town.
Any thoughts on how much?
Well, the commission itself has not got a number that they need, that they want. I would like to say we should give them what they're allowed by the ordinance, which was one twentieth of one percent of our budget. And we can find, figure that number out and do that. Like I say, that's upwards of nine thousand and change.
Anyone have any thoughts on that, Economic Development's good?
They have, they've been active up till now. I mean, do we feel comfortable with that board? That we feel that this is worth the expenditure?
I do feel comfortable with that board. They, that board had its, I don't know how active the board was or the commission was twenty years ago, thirty years ago. I don't know that. I do know that I sat on that commission when I first moved to town. That was the first commission I got.
Well, it was early, bro.
But the point being that that commission had, pretty much had the rug pulled out from under it. Dick was an economic development commission by himself. And over time, the commission just stopped meeting. Once I got on the Board of Selectmen, I resigned from that commission. And as time went by, they just stopped meeting. They stopped doing anything. I can't say that that was good or bad. They did not have the ability to do anything without going through Dick first. When people called professionally over time, when I'm representing a business or an entity that wants to come into a community, the first places I go before I go to planning and zoning is the first selectman's office and the Economic Development Commission of those communities. Is this something that fits in your plan? Is this something that you would support? If not, what are the things that we can do to get that support? Then we come forward to the town. In Deep River, there was no need to go to the Economic Development Commission. Dick saw it, Dick wanted it. That's how it moved. Sometimes successfully, sometimes not, but that's how it went. So, know that they were not, in recent years, they have not been active. The population on that commission right now, I think, is eclectic, but full of very smart and very enthusiastic people who have worked for the community for a long time. And I think it's a good commission. I think it's a commission that will, that does in fact justify spending.
I don't know what it's for.
I know. That was our concern two months ago. I think, whether, I don't know how much they need. I do think that the website, we oughta get, we oughta maybe wait and let them come back to us and say, in order for us to get the website where we need to go, this is what we need.
How many on that commission?
Seven.
Seven? And who's the chairman?
Russ Martin.
Russ Martin? Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. Well, we needed someone who could keep a very eclectic group pointed in one direction, and Russ is that guy.
If I may, it's gone great so far.
Yeah, so far so good.
There is a lot of enthusiasm. There's a lot of ideas. And they're, for at least, they're not, you know, we're gonna contact Mars ideas. It's signage, it's programming to get a decent webpage going. Sort of nuts and bolts things that I think anyone could see the advantage in doing and making progress so that people can use information twenty-four seven and get an idea of what, whether they wanna come to Deep River.
Good. And we will continue to talk about that?
Yeah, I think by next month, we'll have a number for, to request. We will. They will request it from me and I'll request it from you. You will.
And way beyond my authority, it does not seem like you should be constrained by a resolution that had a strange wording many years ago. If you think, if you folks, Philadelphia, so we say use all the time. If you think a website is worthwhile and it costs more than one tenth of one, or whatever the math is, then you should just, we should...
We, I think we will do that, but in order to actually change what goes into their budget, we need to go back to, we need to go to the town. Changing an ordinance is a little more than that, just wanting to do so.
And I think if we see... If we see businesses coming in or even interest and, you know, there's something happening, then by all means, we're gonna come back and say, you know, this is working, so, you know, help us. After two months, we're still finding our way a little bit, so, you know, it's not gonna happen right away. I think we're on the right track.
Well, I know with the hockey, when I was doing the website for the women's hockey, it was track. You've had a hit. Every time somebody goes onto your website, it shows another hit. And that was a few years ago that I played. So, it's an easy way to find out who, how many people are actually hitting the site.
Oh, yeah. And we have two or three people on the commission that are very experienced in that. Websites and, anyway. I don't wanna get too far into it, but it's very exciting.
Having some tad of tenure on the board here, I remember earlier conversations of that limitations. Memories fade. I think we see that every, all the time. People are not always good. There was a concern that the town would give dollars away to induce businesses to come, which is why we put, the limitation was placed there.
Yeah, EDC does not have that authority, so...
We shall continue to talk.
Good.
Anything else you wanna talk about?
There may have been, but I don't remember.
How about if I helped you and suggested you have invited this board to go somewhere?
Oh, good grief. Thank you very much. I haven't, the Board of Fire Commissioners has requested any or all of your attendance at an informal meeting just so we can have a better dialogue as to what their needs are and how we communicate between the Board of Finance and the Fire Board and the Fire Department.
Here's my question to Laurie. Is that possible? Do you have to act, if all of us were to show up somewhere, doesn't that have to be advertised? Well, it may be casual. The world has to know that we're talking to each other.
Yeah, I'd have to send an agenda and I'd know specifically what is on.
The only item on the agenda would be to discuss communication between the two entities.
So, we would not be voting on it?
No, no, no action would be taken.
Would you have to take minutes and report the meetings?
Yes, you would have to.
Minutes for what we do. They can take...
They would have, they have to take their own minutes. They would have to announce it too. The suggested date is the first Monday of October at five o'clock. But we can, you know, that's, that is strictly because their meeting is at six or five or something like that, so... Their regular meeting. So, if we put it off, that's not gonna, there's no skin if we put it off a month or if we try to send them back another day.
So, that's next week?
Well, it might be October first.
So, it's this coming Monday?
Oh, yeah. Holy cow.
In theory, can't do that.
No, we can't. That's right. I've been conflicted with that. Well, we can because they want it to be earlier than the regular meeting, which would be earlier than WPCA.
I will probably be fifteen minutes late. I can tell you that because I know I've got a full day. I'm in Essex, but I've got a full day.
Well, I think five o'clock is early.
Yeah.
For anybody who's working, you know, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to, I don't have my calendar.
But I can respond that there was a positive feedback and what I'd like to do is just get you, you two in an email correspondence with Scott. And you can just, you guys can send it out. And I apologize that I...
Would John later be better for him?
Yeah, five is early.
Five is early.
Five, five.
The school is early, so...
We work till five.
Yeah. I mean, I work till after five.
Yeah, most of us.
But what he's trying to do is piggyback on his board meeting already, right?
Yep.
And they must meet the first Monday of the month.
They do. That's why I'm always conflicted. There are three meetings that I should need to be at. You'll see every now and then, I'm not at WPCA because I'm at the library or I'm at the Fire Commissioners, but... They're all, they all take place at the same time on the same day, so...
So, they asked us for a one-shot deal, first?
No, it's really, no, 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 no. Not every month. They really, it's an effort to try to give us a better idea of their operation. So, you know, we've got some money to spend for them. Hopefully, we're not gonna be spending it on a new truck, but we've got, we'll be having conversations about a firehouse during, if not before, our next budget sessions begin. So, it's, these are things that, I think it's a good idea. You know, not just to, not just to be, have a relationship where the Fire Department is always coming for money. I think we oughta just really make it a look at as, you know, cooperative effort towards that. Those guys do an awful lot for us.
I should do.
Can it be a day besides Monday?
I, that's, I'm gonna leave that to people. Me trying to arrange, the middle man just gonna make things confusing, especially if it's me, as you can see, so...
Good.
I'll let you guys arrange it.
I think it's work, five is early and Monday may not always be the best day, but we'll figure something out.
So, Monday or Wednesday are the better days for me because I'm in town. I'm busier than hell, but I'm in town. But five thirty, Wednesday?
Five thirty, I certainly could do, I could do a five or a five thirty. I prefer not to, but they want it to be with the board, so we'll work it out. We'll send memos back.
We'll go back. Wednesdays do now, okay.
Okay. We'll work on it.
So, maybe another Monday. Not the first Monday, maybe another Monday.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys work it out, I'll make sure that I...
Yeah, pass me his email and I'll work with him and then we'll do it around here.
Actually, Monday would be good. Just brings in their board. They're asking us to come in outside, so, yeah. So, fun. Excellent, excellent.
Thanks for the reminder.
Tell me about three. For a month, we start the conversation last month? I have no other further business unless anyone else does. Motion for adjournment?
So, move.
So, move.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
See you next month, if not before. See you next month, if not before.